Good evening, welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. As I had mentioned at the beginning of each meeting, if you have the ability to come to the board meeting and make public comment, you can at the end of the board meeting. If not, you always can call the school district, 751-399, area code 716. In front of that, and you'll be greeted by Mrs. Pavan, who will make sure that you get a concerned question to the board. At this time, I'll turn the board meeting over to President Carlin.
Thank you Superintendent Carter, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1B, approved meeting minutes dated October 10th, 2023, can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item 2, Consent Agenda for Financial Operations Resolved at the Wilson Central School District Board of Education, approve the following items B through C in the financial consent agenda as submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item 3, Special Presentation, School Board Recognition Superintendent Carter.
Thank you President Carlin. In front of the board members, or if you probably already set them aside, this wonderful rust-colored pumpkin-colored bag courtesy of Mrs. Pavan organizing both Mrs. Meyer's Passway students, they created a pumpkin craft. And the W was crafted by Wyatt Martin and Cat Two and Three students. And Mr. Martin's our new technology teacher. And in perfect timing, because I was just talking about school board recognition, our Mrs. Andres, our chorus teacher and ensemble teacher, is bringing a few of our students down to help celebrate our school board recognition.
Thank you. So, we are actually just in between acts on our dress rehearsal. You might notice they don't always dress like that. So we're doing just a really short thank you. We went, we were at Kleinhand Saturday night, and we sang a lot of the music that we're going to be singing for the You Are Enough concert, the one we raised money this year, we're going to be raising money for community missions in Niagara Falls. Okay, do.
Do.
Me so. Ready?
I'll be your bridge, your troubled water. When you're down, when you're down, I will carry you like a bridge, your troubled water. I will let me down.
And we want to say thank you for being a bridge for us to all the great things that you allow us to do all states and going to Kleinhand and seeing New York City and everything else. And if you're not doing anything Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 7:00 PM, gentlemen's got love and murder. And thank you again for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect timing, yes. And that concert, that they do a combined concert with Niagara Falls, I was able to attend it last year, it's absolutely amazing, beautiful, not only Greek talent that we have, but students in Niagara Falls just, you know, add to that. So if you get a chance to go this year, they usually do one session in Niagara Falls, and then following, they do the same concert here at Wilson. There was also a proclamation made by Governor Hokel, and that I'm supposed to read, in recognition of school board recognition. Proclamation reads, whereas New York State has one of the best public education systems in the nation, which is comprised of 731 school districts overseen by more than 700 school board, whose members are the educational leaders in their community, determining policy that governs the operation of the local school system and providing guidance for the statewide school system that serves nearly 2.7 million New York children. And whereas the state public school consistently maintains high standards in every aspect of school learning experience so as best meet the educational needs of our children and empower them to become informed productive contributors to society and ever-changing world. And whereas we recognize the role of the school board in partnering with school administration and educations to provide students with safe and healthy learning environment and ensure optimal opportunities for intellectual and personal growth. And there's a lot of whereas. Whereas members of the local school boards are committed to serving the children of schools of our communities and devote many hours to elementary and secondary public education as a continuing strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, recognizing that all children can learn, can be successful learners. And whereas these dedicated individuals are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members. And whereas during the school board recognition week, special activities, programs will be held in communities across New York State and is fitting the joint in acknowledging the commitment and contribution of the members of the local school board above strength in our public schools and ensure the best educational experience for our children. Now therefore, I, Kathy Hokel, Governor of New York State, hereby proclaim October 16th through 20th, School Board Recognition Week under her hand, and she signed this along with the Secretary of the Governor. And I'll make sure Mrs. Pavan gets that, make it part of our events. So thank you very much for everything you do for our schools, our staff, our students. The number of volunteer hours I know you put in is unbelievable, so we appreciate everything you do for us. And that's my, that's our school board recognition.
Thank you, thank you. Item B, the NISBA Resolution written by Vice President Stewart.
You all have come with this and your packet?
Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavan, for that. And I just wanted to tell you real quick, the ones that passed and the ones that did not, because these are not any clinical logical order. According to this, what you have to go through to tell me how to vote yes or no, okay? So, the first page, and of course it's not numbered, they're all one through nine, and they all pass. Second page, they all passed, and they're 10 through 16, the non-clinical order. Number 17 on the third page, it was changed, the wording was changed. They take time for everyone to discuss it, and it's all timed, and they add things they want changed. And this was changed to state-supplied naloxone, or AKA Narcan, instead of district-supplied. And that's 17, the one at the top, okay? Number, let's see, and it goes down, 19, 20 failed. 21 was the resolution that talked about preschool services. And down to, I'm counting down to six. The sixth one down was, it had to be amended. And it was amended. It just was, that barely passed, that was all that is. The next one, 24 down, it was also amended. And they go through voting again, we just want to continue it for five more minutes, and most of us are saying two or three now. You know, they have a right to express. And that wording was changed from high-need districts, and that was just taken out to just plain districts. Then a bunch, 27, 28, 29. Last page, it's where it jumped all over the place. If you want to know what one's out, but I can give you the numbers that are in. The top one is 30, 31, 32, 33 is out. 34, 35, 36, adopted. 37 failed, 38 is in. And all the rest of 51 failed. And then 52 and 53 failed, and the last one is 54, and that's in. But if you want to know, I have notes on pretty much every one until I fell asleep because the meeting started at 4:00, and I know it was still going on at 10:18 PM.
Oh my God.
That's what I have to report.
Okay, thank you Vice President Stewart. Item 4, Extracurricular Curriculum Club. For a be resolved at Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District, hereby accrue to create a middle school extracurricular club titled Middle School Walking Club, effective October 25th, 2023, with advisor stipend per the WPA contract. For any year that the advisor position is filled, and that such club is active. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item 5, Agreement. Approve the agreement with the Wilson Teachers Association and a particular person authorized and direct to superintendent executing agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item 6, Personnel, Resignations. 6A, accept the resignation of Pennant Samlin, effective October 24th, 2023, for retirement purposes. Can I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item 7, Personnel Appointments. 7A is Janelle Harvey and Karen Eliso as Middle School Walking Club Advisors for the 2023-2024 school year, per the WPA agreement. Position split 50%. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item B, Alexis Propezano as unpaid assistant coach for varsity wrestling for the 2023-2024 winter season under direct supervision of Coach Michael DiCarlo. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item C, Approved Substitute Teacher. Boris Russell, substitute, has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
It's Larice.
Larice? Okay.
Just so we could direct the date. It's like Larice, it's a different name.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item 8. 8A, accepting award contracts with following 2021 through 2024 planned facilities reconstruction projects per bid open on October 10th, 2023 at 3:00 PM. On approval, the A1A document, A101, owner, contract agreement form shall be prepared between Wilson Central School District and the following successful lowest responsible bidders based on the following dollar amount. General construction, concept construction, base bid is $1,612,000. Alternate number one, $106,000. Alternate number two, $30,000. And alternate, alternate number four, $148,000. Camp construction. Mullenberg Vets Incorporated, base bid is $770,000. Plumbing construction, MKS Plumbing Corp., base bid is $818,000. Electrical construction, CIR Electrical Construction Corp., base bid is $615,000. Alternate number one, $50,750. Alternate number two, $10,850. And alternate, alternate number four, $13,200. Site construction, American Paving and Escavating Incorporated, base bid is $562,700. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
Just a question about how it's structured. When the base bid is given, and the number of alternates after, are those differential values there? Or how is that?
It's on top of.
It's on top, okay, that's, okay.
So the base bid is there, and the reason we want, we actually went out with four alternates, base bid and four alternates, because we didn't, there is so much discrepancy in the world of construction right now with prices coming back a lot higher than they were, so we broke some things out. We actually got very fortunate. We had over 15 bidders, which drove the price down, and we were able to get our base bid and three of the four alternates. The fourth one, we'll see if we can add the last, the next construction project or one of the capital projects. But those, those alternates are on top of the base bid.
I see.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I think we are.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
You just threw me off. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item B, Approve the Agreement Between Literacy Instruction Program Candidate, Marissa Chauvy, Literacy Instruction MS Education Program Candidate from Niagara University, and the Wilson Elementary School to collaborate in outlining an initiative to meet the needs of early-career teachers for a partnership focusing on teacher-mentoring literacy. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item C, Student Teacher Hannah Andrews from Niagara University will be student teaching in the high school with Shawn Evans, English teacher, from October 23rd, 2023 through December 8th, 2023. Your fingerprints have been cleared with New York State Education Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Under number nine, Policies, Policies First Reading.
Thank you. There are four policies before you, board members. I'm going to start with the first one, Facilities Inspection, Operation and Maintenance, 5630. It was last updated in 1999. You can see from the red crossouts and the blue additions, there's a lot of changes since 1999. I'm going to go through all of them with this because you've had this since Friday. This particular policy was reviewed by Mr. Harmon, who would be the administrator, who would be the one most responsible for this policy. It also went to our shared decision-making team at our last meeting last Wednesday, in which two of those board members are here tonight. If you have questions, we can certainly answer them. But it is almost a redo. You can see on page three of eight, Confidence in Long-Range Planning. That's been added. The page five of eight, Confidence in Public School Safety Program, including Building Condition Survey, Visual Inspection, Five-Year Cap. Those are all things we've been doing since 1999 that they finally put into a policy. So that's all brand-new monitoring systems, procedures for investigating disposing of complaints in health and safety. Those are all part of our current practice, the policy just caught up with it. So, board members, if you have any questions, I'll do my best. If not, that's our first read, and I'll come back in two weeks for voting. Policy 7420 was requested by, or was part of our policy audit. And as I had mentioned, and I keep telling the shared decision-making team, we're going to be busy. Hopefully four or five policies per board meeting to try and spread this out. But this is sports and athletic programs, and again, this was last updated in 1999, and there's a lot of changes, including on page 74, or excuse me, page four or five, all about sudden cardiac arrest and procedures and policies around that. Do you think, does anybody have any questions about policy 7420? This was reviewed by our athletic director, also shared with the district, shared decision-making team last Wednesday. The policy 7515, Headlace, is a almost total redo. Our policy was last adopted on April 12th, 2016, and CDC has totally changed their direction on what the approach to headlace. And you can see in our old policy, other than while a nuisance, headlights do not pose a public threat and not shown to spread disease. And it just goes on to, you can kind of read through that, or hopefully you have. And really, it just talks about educating parents when they're found, what we do, what we don't do. It used to be a wholesale check to everybody's head in the class, you can't do that anymore. Or even before that, they used to send letters to the classes of the kids who happened to have headlace, which as soon as you do that, and the student is out the next day, everybody knows. So it's part of protecting all the kids, but also the individual who may have it. And this really just talks about educating the parent, making sure that his treatment is done correctly. And if the treatment is done correctly, it is successful. This was recommended change by our nurses, actually. It came from our three nurses that this policy was so out of date that needed adapting, and they suggested the change, which is making it consistent with the CDC's guidance and American Academy of Pediatrics, and National Association of School Nurses. So we borrowed that language from them, and the nurses were good with it. And it went through our shared decision-making team also.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, that's what I would hear.
Why don't they go through the classes anymore and check?
Because it's not, it's not a recommended treatment. It's fine if you want to get it, not go and bring everybody out, and it takes 20 minutes away from instructional time. So there's not, see, the American Pediatrics said there's no benefit to doing that. They don't jump, they don't climb, they don't, the only way they can go from one person to another is through fabric material, like laying a head on a pillow. We don't lay heads on pillows in schools. So there's, there's no evidence that they transfer from one person to the next in a school setting. Does it at home setting, because obviously if they're wrestling on the rug and things like that. But in a school setting, there's no evidence that there's, there's a transfer. In fact, as soon as they do leave, or if they do leave, they're dead, because they have to stay in contact. So there's, they, the American Pediatrics don't suggest and don't require a full check of a class anymore. And our nurses haven't done it a lot. Now, if there's a student that's suspected, they'll check a student on setting now, but now more of a parent calls. But there's no, we don't go through classes anymore and check them. Okay, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah.
The, like I said, the nurses are the ones that put this, put this one forward for change, and if there's no objection, we'll move it to our next meeting for approval. The last one is our concussion, concussion management protocol, policy, excuse me. And this is also part of our update, of our policy manual, an audit. It last was adopted in 2013. So it's been, it's been 10 years, so it needs to be looked, it needed to be looked at again. And again, we had Mr. Roth, Athletic Director, who is the owner of our concussion management protocol, run through this, see if it meets what we're doing. And then it went to our shared decision-making team with very little change. And maybe there was, I think there was a pen that needed to be changed. And this is mostly just changed in language based on changes in law. Any questions about the concussion management?
Superintendent Carter, can you just clarify for me what the difference between the green edits and the red edits?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
We had the same question at the meeting.
So, if it's green, if I remember correctly, it means either the shared decision-making team or the district administrator wanted that in there. If it, because it didn't, it didn't meet our policy, it didn't meet our practice. If it's blue, Policy Service Act.
I see.
And it's red, that's because they got rid of it.
So the blue and red are all Policy Service, green is something.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I think I got that right. Anything else about concussion management? Okay.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Number 10, Conference Request. Okay, approved conference request for the October 24th, 2023 agenda, item B through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item 11, Conference Record. Superintendent Carter.
Yeah, on October 13th. Four of our English teachers, Brooke Smith, Lindsay Gallagher, Katie Henzel, and Connie Flint, attended the Western New York Network of English Teachers Conference at Buffalo State College. The presentation they attended included all lights turned off, can be turned on, personal reflection for revitalizing engagement, turning the page, changing the class reading narrative, and embodied learning and drama pedagogy. Specifically, they attended workshops that focused on finding ways to bring elements of drama pedagogy and embodied learning into the classroom. Being able to incorporate all students into activities, even at different levels of comfort and varying personalities. And also by engaging in what is being taught will help them understand key takeaways from the conference. Thinking outside the box and incorporating hands-on activities, making literacy equitable for everyone. Different approaches to meet the needs of students that you teach. And when students are able to move around and act, out parts on books, poems, and short stories, they see them in a different light. Connection is brought into the classroom with drama integration. Speaking or acting in front of others can be daunting, so support your reader class, come up with ways. Speaking or acting in front of others can be daunting, so it's important to read your class, come up with ways and everyone participates so that everyone has a role to play in the experience, core reading, helping with jobs such as director, costumes organizing for a group. That is their conference report. But I have one. I attended the fall New York State Council School Superintendent Leadership Summit last month or, excuse me, earlier this month in Saratoga, New York. Couple of key takeaways. I mean, the networking is part of these conferences, I think is a huge benefit. But actually, I was able to do a breakout with federal, federal education updates with Noel Ellison Ning, who is the American Association of School Superintendent's legislative advocate. She talked a lot about E-rate funding mechanism as being a challenge in Supreme Court. Department Ed is looking to strengthen the five oh four regulations to mirror I D A. I D A regulations are for students with I E P, but there's also five oh four guidelines for students that may have a medical, other medical impairment that may keep them from engaging in, and their educational to a full success. So there's a five oh four program. Federal government's looking to strengthen that and mirror it with the I E P program. Everyone's keeping an eye on the funding debate, it's a wait and see type of thing. The, the combination of the debt ceiling and their talk of fiscal responsibility is not gonna play out great for federal funding for education. That's basically the the, the federal government aid conversation. And she talked a lot about the Parents Bill rights for student privacy and the privacy. So there should be still more to come with that. They've enacted a student, our Parent Bill rights for child safety, child privacy protection act. Those are still in legislation. I also had a, a chance after that to meet with Shelley Myers and Mike DeBenedetto, our two of our legislators and all eight, both around the, they chair, one chairs the Assembly, the other chairs the Senate Education Committee. So they talked a lot about foundation aid, which is gonna be the conversation. They put up a million dollars aside to pay consultants in and they really have done anything with it yet, so that they're gonna have to have the conversation about reworking the formula. They're on board with us when it comes to the craziness around electric school buses, they get it. It's just working on slowing it down and making it equitable. They're looking for ways to continue the funding for after-school programs and summer programs, which, as you know, our federal grant dollars diminishing at the end of this year, our after-school and our summer programs will be ending, could possibly end as, as early as this coming. August. The budget, they don't always do it well yet, they're not so keen. And you know, they made this comment, which I've been saying, you know, I'm all for recognizing our individual cultural groups, but the continual addition of school holidays is, at some point, they have to address that. We're gonna run out of one hundred and eighty days between August, or excuse me, September first and June thirtieth. We're not gonna have a hundred and eighty days or let alone enough days to be in school, so. There's bills and some, there's bills in both houses on making more school holidays. If they keep making school holidays, we're gonna be going to your route at some point. It just doesn't seem to make much sense. Also had an opportunity, they did a near, near state education department roundtables, so they made six stations and you could sit at each stage, station and kind of have a conversation with the state ed. And the people that are running it actually by names to faces and things like that. So I, the first table I sat at was a child nutrition and with Kim Bonako and she talked all about the C E P. In fact, that's where I emailed Sue Ball and because Kim said, once you certify, once you certify, you can start feeding, you know, the next, the next month. She said, get your applications and a tax, Sue, ours was accepted pretty quickly, so. And they talked about the enhancement to the farm-to-table program. I sat in the special ed breakout group and really that conversation was about the extension to age twenty-two now, so a student can stay through their twenty-second birthday and the difficulties that's having on transitioning kids to programs. Had a chance to sit with the early childhood program and just make contact for us because, you know, we're, you know, wanna make sure that we are staying up to speed on our preschool programs and the specific question I wanted to ask, and I did, I think it was a great answer, so we're gonna probably, we're gonna set up a meeting with Eric Sweet as the executive director, is, you know, we, we don't use all of our pre-K money because we don't have enough students to open a third program. Well, my question to him is other districts purchase slots and other pre-K programs that those kids need going to. So some of our kids don't, you know, they end up on waiting lists, some of them don't choose to go here because the times don't work for their families to pick up and they may go to one of the daycares out. My question is, is can we use that money to help support the parents on that program? And he said he was gonna look into it. Some other districts said, Donna, I don't know if our particular grant will allow it, but I thought it was worth the question. And then I, the, the next morning, there was a three-way panel discussion between the Commissioner, Eddie Rosa, Jim Baldwin, Senior Deputy Commissioner, Laura Glass, pre-K through twenty, Policy Advisor, and Angelina Johnson, who is P twelve instructional support person. And the biggest takeaway, the two biggest takeaways were, I'm gonna go free because they talked about the, the school holidays too. I think everybody's brought up that whole week, shortage of teaching staff. It's been packing everywhere, all over, all over New York State. And a lot of the Blue Ribbon Commission, which is right now looking at the pathways to graduation and what it could look like. That Blue Ribbon Commission should be finishing up soon and will be reporting to state ed and to the board regents to determine what those grad, graduation measures are gonna be. You know, there's some early top conversations of what it's gonna look like, but as soon as we have it, I'm sure we're gonna have a report out. And that was my four days in Saratoga.
Great.
It was a good trip.
Superintendent Carter, anybody got any other questions? Item twelve, use of facilities request, twelve A, approved use of facilities request per the November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three agenda items B through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carry. Field trips, there is action required. Approved middle school grade eight educational field trip to Washington, D.C. on April twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four with costs for approximately five day substitute teachers to cover for teaching, teacher chaperones. To be considered a proper, proper charge against the district, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carry. Vice President Stewart said there is no report from NOFA. And the panelists aren't here tonight to read her report, so Superintendent Carter, we hear your report.
I don't know one item, just reiterate the capital project and the capital all-day project, both were approved. Capital all-day project should go out to bid sometime between now and Thanksgiving or just after with hopefully bids coming back just prior to Christmas, that's the middle school flooring. The capital project, which we voted on today, what should have sent the alternates were, so two of the alternates are the ceilings in the hallways, the upstairs and downstairs of the high school, middle school. So it's replacing all the ceiling that has, so there's some electrical work, you have to move the lights and the power from there. And that, the other, the third alternate, and they're not in the same order, I don't remember whenever they have them, the third alternate is the exterior doors to the middle school, or excuse me, to the elementary school. So all the exterior doors will be replaced at the elementary school, third door. And other than that, if I should have a question to me, I talked about.
Superintendent Carter, excuse me, just one question.
Yes.
Just so I'm clear on these alternates, that's simply, those aren't happening or those are contingent on themselves?
Those are, they are, one, two, and four are happening, three is not. Thank you, Senator.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Superintendent Carter. I'd just like to thank the, everyone that's been involved with the recognition, great, great recognition of the school board, recognition. This is Myers, faculty students, Wyatt Martin, the CAD. Again, this is probably put a lot of work into this whole process. Professor Andres for bringing the students in. And again, to the board members here, I'd like to thank you for the time and effort you put into it. I know you have a busy weekend, a number of you this weekend, especially you, Mrs. Stewart. So again, thank you for everything you guys did as well. And I have nothing further. But to open it up to the public forum, if you'd like to address the board, please say, state your name, address, keep your comments brief and respectful. Here are none. Then there's some meeting for executive session, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Agreed.